Why don't we wait till Whitney gets back? And then we can start.
Got a question for you. Do you know what's out there putting on the roads?
It's a bribe.
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 Bribe?
A bribe mix.
Yep, better than salt.
Very bad for the cars.
I think it's actually better.
It's better for the cars.
Better than salt.
Your computer and.
I think it's magnesium chloride instead of.
Yeah.
Sodium.
Yeah.
What?
It's not a sodium chloride, it's.
It's magnesium.
Magnesium chloride.
And it delays the freezing of.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
It delays the freezing on the road.
On the road. That's why they put it down.
Yeah. It's instead of salt in the road.
Right. Means they can use less salt too.
Means they can use less salt. And and less runoff, so.
Hey, I'm starting to record again.
Okay, um, this is the infield planning board. It is Wednesday, the twenty second of February. I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty one P M. Members present from my left.
Ted Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Brad Rich.
Tim Ginnings.
I'm Craig Carthart.
Good morning.
And, uh, Whitney?
Uh, Whitney Baker.
Man, I see you Linda, say hello. Can't hear you. Linda unmute.
Hello.
Hi.
I just want you to know that I am in person here.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Um. First order of business is public comments. Uh, Seeley, anything that you want to talk about that is not on the agenda for tonight?
Uh, no, not now.
Okay. Uh, minutes. From January twenty fifth, we can take those first and then we can do the February ones. Um. I got a fine bind. Does anyone have any comments, corrections? Or additional information on the January twenty fifth minutes?
I have none, but I have a question. I'm not sure if this is the time to bring that up or not.
Go ahead and ask the question if you're out of order, I will.
All right, I probably am, I probably am. Line one sixty eight, we uh, we were going to check with the town council on the use of the word impossible. Did we do that? And what was the?
Um, all that stuff goes to the town council with all the warrant articles.
Oh, okay.
And.
It's done as.
We we pass it on and unless it is grossly wrong, he will get back to us. Anything else? I have a. I've highlighted. Uh, line two thirty four, Whitney, should be interactive, not active. Your fourth word. Anybody else have any question? Oh. Kurt, you need to be elevated to a regular member, a voting member.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six. And Whitney or Jim, who wants to do it? Whitney.
Sure.
Okay.
You can't. I got a ruling from, we got a rule, actually I was talking to. Ed, because you can't replace Kate. You cannot replace the select board member, you can only replace a select board.
That is correct.
Select board.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I need your office.
Infulfilled.
So you're in fulfilled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody will care to make a motion on. The January twenty fifth minutes.
Make a motion to accept the January twenty fifth minutes as directed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
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 All opposed. Any extensions? The minutes of January twenty fifth are accepted as amended. Next, we have the February eighth minutes. Anyone have any questions, comments, corrections?
I got one. The heading itself, it wasn't held at Department of Public Works or on Microsoft Teams.
I had that flag too, dude. And I've got one more. Ed Morris was not there.
Morris was not there, right?
He was there in spirit.
Yeah. Yeah, let me see if there was anything else I had on the.
Nor was Kate. Okay, but it's perhaps an okay.
Okay, I have, um. Line one fifty two and one fifty four. Um, the meaning of failure in the context of this paragraph is unclear to me. I wonder if Kurt would.
Yeah, there was the, uh. The warrants regarding the, um, zoning changes. Specifically, I think it was the Quaterak Lodge.
Quaterak, okay.
One, but any one in particular, now any zoning change if it fails. That's currently on the, any current current warrant article. If any current warrant article fails. Um, would we move forward, I guess, I mean, something like that affects.
Okay, can you clean that up for us, Whitney?
Wonderful.
Um, just to.
Go ahead.
Okay, just a general. Ejection, I suppose, maybe to the the whole section here of, uh, item eight. Number eight. Even having a free ranging discussion. And I. I I read this and Whitney, you did a. Great attempt at trying to characterize that. You know, after what was said and so forth. But I don't think that's quite possible with a with a free ranging discussion.
This is the how to implement master plan for zoning changes.
Because I I could go through here a number of times and say, that's not exactly what I said or meant and so forth. And it's not word for word of what we said, so. There's a bit of interpretation there, and I'm wondering if, uh, it wouldn't be just as well. For us to just summarize. Any sort of conclusions that we may have had. We had a free ranging discussion about how to. Talk about the zoning ordinance and rewrite the zoning ordinance, but there's really no need to go into. Try to go into such detail. This is my opinion.
Anybody want to react to Jim's concern?
I personally always in more in favor of more. Information than less. And I think if. Something like that where we're just having around ideas. I think maybe a paragraph that we at the meeting summarize. What we came up with is what we think we could happen and that goes into the minutes. Um, is fine. I'm just wary of having that be. The ripple effect of everything gets condensed down to one line. Of problem.
Well, can you even do that after the fact? Can you summarize? Something after the fact, after the meeting's been held and after the minutes have been developed?
Well, that's what, that's what minutes.
Yeah, correcting the minutes.
Yeah.
I think the minutes is, I mean, I mean, we could come up with a quick paragraph that we discussed. But I know it's just there, what's there? I mean, I'm, I don't see change, the need to change what's there. Just for the sake of it.
What I think we should do is is just table approval of these minutes and take another stab at rewriting section eight. And any, you know, review. We have a recording or did we have a recording that night?
We had a recording.
Yeah.
Um.
And I would say.
Audio only, I think, right, Rob?
He did, I didn't.
Kurt did.
Yeah, he's been on there.
Okay, well, and and maybe just review that for. Okay, did we decide on anything or were we just talking about stuff?
I don't believe we reached any conclusions, so.
Consequently, I I think a better way to handle this is just to. Say we had a free range discussion, this was the topic, we reached no conclusions and.
I I assume, put that line in as a correction to the minutes as a, uh, the final line in that section. Is this, this was a free ranging discussion. And no conclusions were reached.
Well, if you're going to leave all these sentences in here, then. Want an opportunity to review these carefully because it. Some of this, it just isn't quite what was said. But I don't want to do that tonight. I think we should just just table this and 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 look at it over the next couple of weeks and bring it back next time.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Dave?
Okay. Linda?
Um, I'd like to say that I don't think we've ever had such wonderful minutes. And it it's, maybe we've become inured to. How good it's been to have all the details to remind us of what happened instead of things being condensed. So I'd like to say thank you to Whitney because I think they're quite wonderful and I would leave them alone.
Second. You can't.
We, we, a week ahead of time, we have time to read them and to bring up changes that we think weren't what we said. And I think at this point, we should just move on. Because we don't ever want to see ten o'clock at night again.
Okay, I I will take your comment as a piece of discussion to Tim's motion. And if there are any more discussion to to table.
Well, I I completely agree with with Linda that. If you, if we're talking about a comments made at the hearing, then we need, that needs to be precise. If we are debating a a topic and we are reaching a conclusion as we make a decision, then then those minutes need to be precise. And Whitney, you do, you do a great job of that. Um, but when we're just having a roaring discussion about stuff and not really. Accomplishing anything, we're just throwing ideas out there, that sort of thing, it's it's really hard to capture the intent. The mood, the. And so forth, so I I was just saying we should avoid avoid doing that.
I guess I'll throw my two cents in and I. I agree that everything in this set of minutes lacks certain nuances. Um. And I would suggest that. Since this is, since the discussion we had on February eighth is going to be an ongoing discussion. And that there will be, eventually, there will be a conclusion. That we let the minutes. As presented, basically stand. Um, with, you know, some corrections if certain members feel that. Corrections are necessary. And eventually we will reach a conclusion, which probably will come in the form of a motion that we vote on. And that way. Um. We preserve the discussion, if not in a hundred percent accuracy. If somebody wants to go back and say, well, I let the planning board reach their conclusion to. For instance, um, have the zoning or the land use regulations. As least restrictive as possible. There are minutes of one, two, three meetings where that's discussed. And people can kind of ferret out. Um, what the discussion was about. For most discussions, there would be a a video and or audio tape that they could refer to. Um. So that's, that's my two cents on it. But we are voting on Tim's motion at this point.
Which is. Uh, which is simply the, uh. What is my motion?
It was the table.
Table.
Table and you would sort of. We've, um, we've reworded the discover what's was printed.
Yeah, if 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 I missed an opportunity to do that last week, I I guess I I just missed it, so. But, if that said, my motion then would be to table the minutes until next meeting.
All right, well, we had a motion and a second, I think we should vote on it. All in favor of tabling the minutes of the eighth of February until our next meeting? Indicate by raising your hands. Uh, one, two, three, four, all opposed? Three to two, a four to two, and any extensions? No extensions. Motion carries.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, we have two hearings. I am told by Rob that both of our hearing people. Are going to join us remotely.
Both here.
Are they here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cory, Corey is the New Hampshire Electric.
Okay.
Barry is the, uh, it's a little business.
Okay, let's take, um.
Good for electric.
Let's take the call, yeah. All right. Unmute yourself, please.
Hey. Hi, how's it going? My my name's Corey Keith, I'm the Arbers with New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Um, I'm here tonight because, uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op and its contractor, we plan to do cutting. On Boys Camp Road for our standard maintenance. Um, prior to doing any of our maintenance, I I did drive that road and assess to, uh, look for trees that were. Greater than the fifteen inch circumference was the RSA two thirty one, one fifty eight. Um, that I felt were a risk to our wires. I identified seven trees and I marked them with red and black ribbon. Um, out of these seven trees, four have structural defects such as decay or poor structure or seams between the limbs. Um, two are healthy, they're they're pine, white pine trees, um, which I think. You know, one of our tallest growing species, they're directly under the wires. Um, and I just feel it'd be better to cut them down instead of top them. Um, and then I had one tree that was healthy, but it had significantly leaned towards our primary wires. Um, we have contracted with Lucas Tree Expert Company to do the cutting of this work. Um, we expect them to perform all their, um, their work in accordance with acceptable arboriculture standards. All the brush and limbs cut on roadside locations will be chipped in woody undeveloped locations. These chips are dispersed into the woods, uh, making sure not to accumulate in piles or into ditches, swales or streams or any that sort. And I do check up on the work that our contractor does after, um, and and audit all their work before, you know. Um, that they get paid for for completing that work. Uh, near developed land in front of people's houses, the chips are blown into a truck and disposed of off site. Uh, if there's any location in town, if if anybody wants some of these chips, um, feel free to contact me, we will deliver them at no cost. Um, so that's that's the majority of the work we're doing, it's just, uh, Boys Camp Road. Uh, that's the only scenic road that I saw in Enfield that we'll be, uh, doing our maintenance on this year.
Where do you expect to do it?
Uh, we started on George Hill Road currently, um. If the road, I expect the roads are probably going to be posted soon, probably Boys Camp Road, because I think part of it is dirt. So we might have to wait until after mud season. Um, if we do have favorable conditions next week, we might start it, but I would say. I don't have an exact timeframe, but I it it could be next week, it's unlikely, it's probably going to be most likely after mud season.
Okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing you saying it's going to be sooner rather than in the summer or the fall.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Seeley, let the board members talk first and then we will take comments from public. You know, that's the way we do it.
And here though.
Okay, no problem.
Turn it up louder if you need some more volume.
Um, board members, any questions or comments for the gentleman from the Electric Co-op?
No.
Rob?
I would just add that Corey and, you know, had communicated with me and we communicated with Public Works so that the highway staff and. Our highway supervisor have been out and seen and and they have expressed no objections to any of the trees that he had.
Okay. Well, and then. Certainly not a board question, but he did mention it about ship delivery. Um, just, I could use some, just contact you directly, is that how that works? Or?
Yep, if you reach out to Rob, he has my cell phone number and my email, so feel free to contact me, it'll be a big help, so, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments, questions? Seeley, your turn.
Yes, I didn't hear the beginning of him, but. Is he going to go down like, are your trees marked, the ones that you want cut?
Yes, they are. Yep.
And are there, uh, is there any other, um, trees or brush you want to cut?
Could you ask that one more time? I I missed the last part.
Is there any other brush or trees are you going to cut?
Uh, we're, we're going to cut, uh, the the trees we've marked if we if we have approval for the board, but, um, the brush does. You know, gets gets chipped, we won't leave the brush or anything, the logs do stay on site, but we can, we cut them into manageable lengths.
All right, but you're not going to cut anything more, uh. Bigger than six inches, right?
Those are the only ones. Yep, those are the only ones that I saw were bigger than the fifteen inch circumference. Um, everything else is just brush. Um, that's that's really probably diameter, you know, about maybe one inch or so. And then, yeah, that that that's all I saw, and then just pruning a limb.
And the ones that you do have marked, are they dying or are they interfering with the lines or?
Yep, they, um, so I marked seven trees, four have structural defects, um, they have decay. Some some mushrooms, uh, some fruiting bodies on it, and then there's some that. It's poor structure where they have, we call an included bark when you get two large leaders that meet. Um, they get bark right in the middle, so it's a weak connection, so. Um, and then the other two, I had two healthy ones, but they're directly underneath the wires and they're white pines, and if we. If we top them, what happens is we kind of upset the tree where it puts out more sprouts. And being a white pine and how fast it grows is one of our tallest species in New Hampshire where. Before we come back for our next maintenance cycle, which is roughly every ten years, it's, it would. Probably be in the wires at that time if we if we didn't cut it at the base. Um, and then I had one other tree that was was healthy, small tree, I think it was eight or nine inches in diameter, and it was just. It just has significant lean, um, headed towards our, towards our wires.
Okay, the pine, and the pine tree you said is, it just, it just interfered and you can't trim it. Can't really trim it, it's easier to cut it down.
Yeah, if we, um, so if we trimmed it, we we top it, which is actually a poor arboricultural cut. Um. It it just kind of angers the tree and then it will, it will put out, actually, if we cut off just the top, you get like four sprouts that come out. And it grows aggressively, so I just, I see it growing into our wires before our next maintenance cycle if we were to top it. So that's, that's why I felt it was, it was better to just have those come down. Um, they weren't large trees, I think they were, I think they were close to six inches in diameter.
Six inches in diameter? That's something like this. You're telling me a pine tree, can you see me?
I, yep, I can see you now, yep, I see you in the corner.
That's like six inches, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. For diameter, diameter wise, yeah.
All right. It's not like this, right? Not like this.
I'm trying to look, I don't see, yeah, yeah, it's not, they're not, they're not big.
It's not like this, right?
Right.
It, it's like this. Six inches, I'm saying.
About that, yeah, about that.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's legal anyway. I just want to make sure it wasn't a real big one because that I would have get to.
Okay. Um, okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We closed the public hearing at this point. Any discussion from board members? Somebody care to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the. What are we bringing?
Recutting plan.
Recutting of Boys Camp.
New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
Thank you. Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions?
Thank you, Corey.
Passes unanimously, thank you, Corey.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
You as well. Enjoy the snow.
I'll try. Bye.
Um. Let's see, we should note that we have one guest. Sir, did you sign in yet?
No, I didn't.
Okay, there's a sign in sheet behind you. And we should also note that Kate arrived about three or four minutes ago.
Six fifty five, no.
And she has joined the board.
Probably from another meeting.
No, talking emergency. Everyone's okay.
All right.
Rehome, urgent.
Um. Kate will do a select board report.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. I guess we took it off for last time.
Why did we take it off?
Because she wasn't going to be here last.
But I submitted by report, so we should leave it on.
And we gave it.
Yeah, I can do it later in public.
Yeah, well, well, we'll do the, after our next public hearing.
That's fine.
Which is. A rehearing. On, let me find the right packet here.
The very confusing Lake Street.
Extremely confusing.
Interesting reading, right there.
Yes.
Um. So this is the lot line adjustment and merger. That we did, I think, a month or a month and a half ago. And since that time, a title company has requested an additional note we put on the Mylar. As I explained at, it was either our last meeting or a month ago. I could not sign the Mylar with that added note because the full board needed to approve it. So. We are going to reopen this hearing. And Barry Schuster, who was on Zoom, is the attorney for the Lupus's. And he is going to explain to us as best as possible. The history of these lots. Barry, can you hear us?
I can, thank you very much. I appreciate the chance to explain this and, um, I'll just start by saying what's interesting is that. There's a lawyer on behalf of the buyer side and the seller side, and we both agree on this. So when you get two lawyers agreeing, it's either dangerous or a good thing, but I'll leave it there. Um, the other is, the reason it's such a a tortuous experience is, as Nick Lupus explained to me. George Moore was, um, uh, perhaps famous in town and, uh, I think since he's no longer with us. And, uh, I think since he's no longer with us, I can say that, as Nick said, if he had a ten lot subdivision, he would sell all twelve lots. So, that's a little bit what happened here. Um, if you look at the, the map on the last page of the package, it's page thirty-seven is what I had. But it shows the, the map with the additional, um, note four. Um, and again, nothing is changing for the boundary line adjustment. It's only that note four. But as you'll see, um, a- above the, um, Nick's property, where it says proposed boundary, there's a space between the, the Lemke property and I'll say Nick Junior's property. And that was supposed to be, at one point, Grove Street. Um, but, um, it, the section along Lake Street um, was always part of the Lupus family property. And, uh, it, it went through a series of ownership. And there's actually a deed that went, um, from Francis LaBounty, who I think was the former chief. And, and he talks about having, uh, possessed that section of the property since nineteen forty-five. So, it, it should have shown up somewhere. It never did. But it's always been considered part of the Lupus property, uh, on the Lake Street side. So, uh, the title company just wanted that note to go in there, uh, to clarify that there is no Grove Street. There never was. Uh, there's no plan showing Grove Street. There was only some reference in some very, very early deeds to a Grove Street. But it was never laid out. There's no plans. The town doesn't show it. The tax maps don't show it. But, um, just to get rid of that ambiguity of why it was even mentioned. Uh, the title company said, put that number four in, um, that just refers to it as a paper street, never built. Um, and then it was always part of the Lupus property. So it's more of a, a title clearing issue than, um, anything else. The boundary lines are not changing from what you approved. Um, but it's just, um, title clearing so that people, when they look at this, um, and they go back and do the title years from now, if they ever see Grove Street, they'll know why, um, it was never built and it's always been part of the Lupus property. But I'll certainly answer questions if I can.
Anybody have any questions, sir?
Um, just, uh, I'm assuming you did the deed, deed research for the, all the other abutting properties. And looking at the plat that has the note on it, is that section of lands that I'm assuming belongs to the Papendaeus, we, Papendamus, revocable trust. Uh, lot thirty dash sixteen dash one, or maybe one of the other abutters that's not marks. Um, oh, I mean, it's sort of like, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't mean to. Um, actually, the, the Papademos property and, well, Moore Street, uh, sort of just peters out. And if you go to the end of Moore Street, it drops off very steeply. And the Papademos property comes in, I believe, from Lake Street because you can't get in from Moore Street. Um, I tried and turned around quickly. Um, and so, um, what I think is that between Lemke and Nick Junior, um, they're probably gonna come back someday and, and just split that property and do the same thing that we're doing now with the same note and saying, um, you know, it's on Moore Street, we never knew who owned it, but, you know, now that my father went through this and we found it in the title work, um, we're gonna just split this ourselves. I don't know what they're gonna do, but I wouldn't be surprised. And, and yes, we, we spent hours and hours doing title work on every property on Moore Street on both sides of Lake Street. Um, and it, you know, and never found anything about Grove Street other than referencing a deed once.
All right, so basically, it's a, it's a Gora land that's unknown ownership at the moment.
And then always occupied by the, the Lupus family, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Who are we taxing on?
Okay.
Oh, it's, it was kind of fascinating, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just, um, you could probably let me know, you, you far familiar with this and make sure, uh, this is still up to date. I have an older version of the hard road to travel. Yeah, it's an old, it's not recent, but it does have a section in there on paper streets. And basically, it says in summary, if a paper street was dedicated by the owner but never accepted uh, between eighteen ninety-three and nineteen sixty-nine, which this plat falls into, um, that dedication ended automatically unless acceptance by the municipality occurred within twenty years. So, I think legally, um, it's, I mean, that notice, it can't be challenged. Um, there's other stuff that happened outside of those time, that timeframe of eighteen ninety-three to nineteen sixty-nine, where the legislator liked to change the laws. Uh, but during that timeframe, it was a twenty-year period of, if it's not dedicated and accepted, it does no longer exist.
Correct. The town, the, the town never took it, and it was never shown on a plan.
Yep.
So if it doesn't exist, who owns it? Which lots? No, I, I, I know it's not our problem. I'm just curious. I'm, I'm, I'm curious. Be- because.
Split between the abutters.
Cause in your, in your cover letter, you state that, um, the, what, what's called tract three, which is, I think, currently thirty dash nineteen and maybe some others were, um, taken by essentially adverse possession. And my, my reading of the deed description puts that tract on the easterly side of the paper street, road street. So, I'm wondering if, if this adverse possession piece of property refers to the road or refers to the entire lots? Can you shed some light on that?
Oh, no, that's a great question. Um, and we don't know where it is or where that paper street would have been because it was never shown, but you're right, it talks about it on the easterly. But the Lupuses have always owned that. And, uh, the Tucker and Rag property is, is tied actually, uh, to Dartmouth Street on the corner. So we know where theirs is. Uh, but then it was the Lupus property that went westerly. And although it talked about something on the east, it was always that, that a hundred and forty feet that it, it always covered. Uh, actually, it was a hundred and eighty feet, and that's why we're, he's giving some of this back to his son, uh, to basically straighten the line out. But, um, it, it was, we could not figure out where that really was. It's somewhere in that whole hundred and eighty feet, but, um, you know, it looks like it should line up with the piece coming down from Moore Street. But again, without any plan or description of that so-called Grove Street, we don't know. But again, as the deed from, uh, LaBounty's talk about it, um, and that's also in your package, I think it's page twelve. But, you know, since nineteen forty-five, they always just controlled it. And that's why it would be adverse possession. Um, and, you know, without going to, uh, a court for a quiet title, um, they didn't bother doing that back in nineteen forty-five, and Lupus, since it's all Lupus family, they wouldn't know who to go to court against to claim it, because they've always, always had it.
Okay, um. Let me just say, interesting.
Yeah, oh, you're right, you're right.
Okay, um, any more questions or comments from board members? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, gentlemen in the back there, did you have any question or comment?
I'm the surveyor.
You're the, oh, you, uh, I'm sorry.
The lawyer.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. It's been.
I just can't observe.
Okay.
Keep an eye on Mr. Schuster.
Okay. Somebody care to make a motion on this?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that the plat add, uh, note number four to the Lupus merger slash boundary line adjustment.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Um, abstentions? Okay, uh, motion is passed. I think we have a copy of the Mylar that actually has the fourth thing added. And I will sign that after the meeting. Barry, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
And explaining this. Good luck tomorrow, Barry.
Well, I'll, I'll try to keep it clear, easier next time, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, good night.
Good night. All right. There are no conceptuals. Uh, old business would be mapping project. Um.
Select board.
Oh, let's do select board.
Oh.
You're on stage.
My apologies for being late. I had an emergency. I'd like to pull for health reasons. Um, so the select board met to say the twenty-first this, this week. Very short meeting, and the primary item of interest, I think, to everyone, buddy, would be the, uh, even though the town manager very wisely took this vacation, which I always recommend doing, uh, he did leave us a very thorough report and gave us a little bit of a progress update on the public safety complex. So those plans are moving forward and they are moving forward with some requests for grants. So the select board did, is sending two letters of support to Senator Shaheen. One which has to do with energy efficiency and solar, and one that has to do, uh, more with the, um, outfitting and security portion. So looking at some, you know, good chunks of worthwhile grant money and hoping, um, to get it out of the, the federal allocation. So that was probably the most exciting thing. Um, and then exciting for families in town is that the storybook block that the Recreation Commission and the library have been working on together was funded by Grant from Eastman Charitable. So it's, there's a walk around Shaker Park on the outside that has kind of been in ill use and, and not been taken care of for, for a variety of reasons. That will get cleaned back up and then it will be, uh, a storyboard line and it will change from time to time. So as people walk, it will have a story to kind of motivate them with. So kind of a neat new item to add to town. So, and other than that, uh, we went into non-public, uh, for the purposes of, you know, doing an annual review. And that will be forthcoming, uh, once this is unsealed. It's not a big deal, it's just something to know we're, we're doing because and to keep up on some slack.
Okay. Um, old business, the mapping project, uh, Rob and I took a look at the available wall space in this room. And we kind of decided that this wall would be a logical place for a large map. Uh, we figured, I think, five feet high, which would probably be about three, three and a half feet off of the, uh, floor. And then it would go to the ceiling. Um, I had proposed that we do it on a dry erase board with the tax parcels permanently printed. And depending on the enlargement factor and the clutter factor, we may add some other layers. Um, it would be nice to have, uh, the acreage of the parcels and possibly the planometric layer that shows the structures. We've got to play around with it and see if it's actually, um, gonna be large enough that those layers can be put on and leave us room to do what needs to be done by way of, um, drawing on it as, as we go through the process. Um, we thought we had a map that, uh, came from Public Works. And before I got it, Rob discovered that it had the Ironman subdivision parcels on it. I have no idea why, uh, since the Ironman subdivision never actually happened. But, uh, it was our thought that that would not be appropriate to put on a map that we're gonna be working with. And Rob, can you pick up from, from there in terms of finding a different map?
Yeah, we'll be able to, uh, I've talked to CAI, which is our GIS service in Littleton. And they can output whatever we want into a high-res vector PDF, vector image, so.
Okay.
Sky's the limit there. It's, uh, my, my personal preference for you guys is that it shows the parcel shapes. I think that's the most important, because you guys wanted to know, like, where's there a lot of small lots and where's the big lots and just zero it on it. I think you, you gotta be careful if you get too busy. Obviously, that's just a roadmap there, that one that you're looking at.
Right, yeah, that's.
Uh, one thing that I offered to David, we do have a projector. We could project onto a white wall.
Maybe, what happened to our screen?
The screen's out in the shop. They use it for a couple of trainings.
Okay.
Cause we haven't been using it much in years, and we've got the big TV, but we could, we could bring the screen back in and use that to project and kind of play around with it. Because you could project it five, six, seven feet, whatever you want.
You could project it right on the whiteboard and right on the whiteboard.
Yeah, so that was one thing that we were thinking about doing.
The, the screen just, just shows the details better than a wall. Uh, the design, that's what the design for.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I've seen big, you know, big differences between a screen versus a blank wall.
They also make a pan we have, so that becomes reflective, so. Yeah, just to, just to sort of preview a map before we go to a printing. David has sources that can print at very har- high, uh, size, basically. So, kind of play around with it. I, I would be happy to, uh, demo for you guys some sizes.
Probably look at it on the screen before we decide and then.
Exactly.
Spend the money on them. Or even if you printed a small portion of it, so that you could see, like, in areas where you have really lots of small lots, like down in the village. Right, that's what would be the size of the.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's essentially the, the testing procedure that I would be following. Um, you know, figure out what the enlargement factor is and then take a small section and print it on eleven seventeen or whatever. And then we could all look at it and decide if, you know, what, what level of detail in terms of other layers um, reaches essentially the clutter factor and it obliterates the information.
My, my experience is the planometric layer does, does start to jazz it up a little bit too much, I think, at a certain.
That's a nice thing, though, if you were to project onto the whiteboard and just do it as a trial, then you could add the planometric layers and pull them as you're working with it, right? You could manipulate it, just like if you were to have a flat, and then, uh, I don't know if you're, I grew up with the overheads where they layered another layer on top and another, and they pulled one off. And so it essentially does the same thing as that.
We can activate those layers and.
Layer, yeah, and so it's pretty great for working with, and you can take them off and on. It might not be your final thing you want to work with, but you could get it so that you get to a general level and then you could maybe dial it in on a more refined level. But you'd be like, generally, I want to hit here, here, and here. Draw on the board with your marker for a hot second, take a picture, and then get down to the other level. I mean, I think you could do a lot of your planning that way.
So when you're thinking paper on the wall, are you thinking the whole town on one sheet? Are you thinking blowups of sections of town? Are you thinking a blowups of sections of town per sheet?
I'm thi- I'm thinking the whole town on one essentially dry erase board map that we could, you know, map out zoning districts. See how they all fit together or not. We don't like it, we take the eraser, get rid of it and do something else.
I'm just sort of visualizing the process. I, I can see that as like marking, but to get to the where you draw the lines, I would like to see smaller section, quad, quadrants of the town blown up. So then you decide, okay, this is where the line's going to go in this quadrant. And then you transfer that to the big picture. Otherwise the.
Oh, look at that.
I do have something cool for you guys to look at. This is what I originally showed David. So this comes from CAI. Part of our contract with them, we get these every year. And what's really neat, the only, the only thing I didn't like is that if you look at this, this is sort of the key, sorry. The, the sort of breakout maps, you know, if you say you live on map twenty-two or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
This is sort of the key to find the breakout maps.
Yeah.
They were not done all to scale. In, in actually playing field, we've literally evenly broken it into, so we could have actually taken, if they'd done it that way, you could have taken this map.
Yeah.
And literally glued them on the wall as, as panels.
Yeah.
But the problem with how they did it for us is you can see that there's much smaller scale, there's no scale changes.
Yeah.
Like if you read on here, it's.
Right, each pa- each page of this has a different scale.
One inch, it's five hundred feet.
They vary, they vary.
Yeah. Exactly.
That's why I'm thinking if you do a quadrant.
Fifty feet.
Or just even like this whole thing here where the, the core downtown area is, that's one page. That way you get a much better sense of what you're looking at.
But you guys, I mean, these, these maps are available anytime if you want. And we do actually have, I have a smaller set that is probably.
Yeah, eleven by seventeen, I think that.
Yeah.
So I have a copy of that.
Yeah. But these are all parcels. You know, you can flip in here and you can see there's your, there's lots.
Yeah.
You can look at yours. Obviously, there's no, no other layers and there's no planometric. My complaint with the planometric is with this service is an infield that's not kept up with the planometric layer. So snapshot in time when they first did the maps, which was what year?
Yeah, it's been a while.
At least ten, at least ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least ten years.
So any structure that's been built or any land that's been cleared is not in that new layer. And that's frustrating because, I mean.
Yeah.
The maps.
I mean, Google Earth is probably more up to date.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And those things.
Now, I have asked CAI, how much does it cost to update that? And I gave that information to Ed and he's like, we're not paying for an update. Thirty, thirty grand or forty grand to do it. They, they literally start with a high-res aerial.
Yeah.
They'd probably use Google, somebody to go, you know, lot by lot to paint them in there. I was like, no, we're not doing that.
Well, on the.
Does it show the land use kind of thing? The lots will show what kind of land it is?
Probably not.
We don't have that.
You would have to have a map.
But that's what's neat if you were to project it is you couldn't pull that.
Yeah, we do have, if you look on.
Those in.
If you look on our GIS, there is, I don't know, we probably have twenty different layers. You could, from steep slopes, uh,
Right, so you could.
Hydric soils.
You could take a straight one and put a topo over.
The zoning layer, the sewer pipes.
And I think you can use the master plan information a little bit, you know, necessarily have to layer it from GIS. But if you were standing up there, you could, you know, make some decisions using it.
Right, right. That's what I'm thinking. You do your projection, you do your multiple layers, you get your sense of, okay, this area we're going to call this. And then you can mark it on your paper.
Right.
Then you go to with your marker and you draw your lines on your paper copy. And call, this is what's going to be the downtown. Well, this is the perimeter of the sewer water existing, potential. This is where the potential dash line will be. And then you can go from there and then you do, here's your lake lot.
Right, you have, you have your big map on this wall, you work your quadrants over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would work.
And you say, okay.
Mostly final.
I want to, I want to do a quadrant of Crystal Lake.
Yeah.
Because I know there's a bunch of little lots and I want to see how they fit in.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then we're going to, then that'll give us a good jumping off point as to, because you got a hundred little lots, how do you zone those hundredth little lots so that every time somebody wants to cut their grass, they don't have to go and get a lot on the estimate? Cause there's a brook that goes between the two lots.
Yeah, I, I, I've done some research, you know, uh, obviously what, what confronts me as the land use guide the most is setbacks.
Yeah.
That's what the zoning board does almost exclusively is step back variances. And I have found towns, and this is a tool that we may investigate as we move forward, that the setbacks actually vary by the, by the size of the lot itself.
Yeah.
So if you've got a fifty-foot wide lot,
Right.
Your setbacks aren't a standard twenty, thirty or whatever.
Right.
It may actually go down to five.
Yeah.
Because. If you're, if you're on a private road, then your setback is different than if you're on a public road.
Right. And maybe, I mean, that's what I've, I've started looking at other lakefront towns, found Wolfboro, that literally the, the setbacks are, are based on the wide lot itself.
Yeah.
So if it's in a tight little neighborhood, the setbacks tend to get a little tighter.
That's, that's what I was thinking, I think we talked earlier about. You have a lake district, those are your really tight, small lots.
Right.
You have specific word setbacks for lake district lots, which are going to be very different than your rural.
Right.
That's, um, exterior lots.
Yep.
Where people are living there because they don't want to see the neighbor. So you have bigger setbacks.
I think too, we need to remember that over time, and this is just in general across the country, people stopped putting their homes together, like side by side, because of two reasons, right? And one of the number one reason was plague. Because the rats went house to house.
Yeah.
And the fleas on the rats carried the plague. And when they started, these houses started burning down.
Yes.
They put in firewalls and firewalls stop the plague because it stopped the rats. So I'm not saying we're having that problem here, but the reason you space houses in a downtown area is also to do with fire. So I think, you know, we could look at that, but I think there should still be a pretty decent min spacing because you have a nice tall lake, because what happens on the lake when you don't have a wide lot, you go up.
You go up.
And so I just want to make sure that we're leaving a corridor for the wildlife and save the, safe access for fire.
Yeah.
Um, because we don't want to burn anyone down. We burned down an entire section of lakefront and we're going to be super poor.
Yeah, C A, C A I. That's right, the GIS company.
Yes.
So when you go on the, the website and you look, the average person can go on, you know,
Yeah.
Look at the tax maps. They do seem to be at the same scale. You know, I could print the whole town.
Oh, the web, yeah, this is, I'm, the, the, I was talking about was the.
I understand.
Yep.
But, um, so do you have any idea how accurate that is?
It's not.
Yeah, I, you know, I want to make this.
If you, well, it's my, what I've been noticing, seeing, and it becomes a problem when people don't understand how it works, the written number on that lot probably came from the deed.
Right.
So when you see a lot has the perimeter and it says how many feet this line is and how many feet that line is, that's probably reasonably accurate because that number came from somewhere. Uh, most likely the deed. But then when you start blowing it up and printing and have a little bar scale, the scale gets thrown way up. That bar scale does not match the physical dimensions on the piece of paper. So you take your ruler, put it on the bar scale, then you go to the lot line, they don't match.
And some of it has to do with.
The deeds don't, the deeds do not match the tax map.
No, no, it's completely separate.
And some of it has to do with the fact that some, over the years, right, there were conbacks and concave properties, right? We were in your hands. Somebody surveying, they, we found like you can get a lot, you start out with twenty, like I have a friend out who just bought and crafted, they, they bought twenty-five acres or something, they have fifty-two. Right, it happens all the time around here.
Right, right, well, that's, that's old deeds being poorly described.
Yeah, absolutely.
Land abiding so-and-so's field. Well, how, what, that doesn't give you a dimension.
I had a deed that was missing a whole side for like four, four versions.
Or the oak tree where the cow had the calf.
Yeah.
These aren't just, these aren't just out in the country, these are downtown infield. I'm talking Shake Hill Road where the tax map says the lot's eighty-five feet wide and it's only sixty feet wide.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I've looked at, at lots on, I think on May Street, that to my eye look exactly the same and one is listed as maybe one acre and the other is less than half.
Right.
I mean, there's just tons of areas.
We're just trying to, I mean, rough in though and make good decisions based on the visual, the lots and everything.
Right, right.
And then we'll refine it, right?
Right.
We're going to be describing it for like eastally bound of X and Y.
I'm going to give you, my understanding is the tax map tells you who your butters are.
Right.
It do not tell you the size of your lots. They just say where it's physically located along the road and who your butters are.
Right.
And that, and after, anything after that is getting it to guesswork.
And it's, it's an approximation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The shape of the lot, how it fits with the other lots and so forth. And they probably had to make a lot of judgment calls with me. Yeah, we're not, we're not interested in individual lots. We're interested in the neighborhood.
Right, right.
As a piece. How does that fit for the neighborhood?
Right, but when you look at the lots around the lake or the, the downtown area, you can see they're all, and you, when you drive that area, you can just see, you can see it.
Yeah.
They're all pretty similar.
Right.
In gen- in general, for, for general purposes. And then when you go to further out, you start seeing, just even just driving around down the road, you start to see the lots physically change.
Okay, so. So how soon would we be able to get the app on the wall? Well, I'm going to need to touch base with Rob and/or CAI. Make sure that I can get a file that my vendors can print from. I think we probably ought to do a little bit of experimentation projecting on the wall of, on that board to, to come to a consensus on where's our clutter factor kick in? So that we know what layers get printed. And after that, that'll probably be a couple of weeks at the most.
Just so we comply with the purchasing policy, it needs to run through town leadership because we have to make sure we're compliant. We have a lot of committees going to purchase outside things and it has to run through the office. We're not picking on you guys. We have another committee that we are working on, teaching them it's a resource. I just want to make sure that we also do the same thing.
Existence is a good thing.
It's a good example.
Well, I think, uh, I think this might be a good opportunity to form a little two or three-person subcommittee to go through all of that. Because otherwise we'll, we'll come back to our next meeting in two weeks, yes? Somewhere around.
Too much, eh, two weeks?
You don't need a subcommittee to do an ordering because it has to go through the town.
No, I'm not saying about ordering. I'm just saying about testing out the maps and making a decision about what's actually printable and that sort of thing. I think we can do that as a group in maybe a half an hour.
Just throw them.
Are we gonna? I, I'm just anxious that, you know, we're, we're already approaching March, so. Wells apart on do this. Actually, we didn't even have that much time. So I, I think a, a small group of two or three of us could, could come up with a map that, that we think, based on what we've talked about tonight, that would work and just bring it to that next meeting. Throw it to us, say, yeah, that looks good and go print it. But even then, you're, then we're another meeting away before we actually get something on the wall.
I think you let your person that our town hired do it. And I think you have to be very careful about forming subcommittees of a planning board because, well, you may not be violating right to know law, you're violating the spirit of the law, which is that you meet in public. So you might, you working with Rob is very different than sitting down with two or three people because, say you just barely hit a quorum and then those three people vote one way, right? And then you have the other three people, now you have a problem. And that's why right to know law exists. So I think you can't be pulling these ad hoc committees out of something like planning work. I, I, I would worry about that.
I think that's a good piece of.
Technical issue. It's not, it, it has nothing to do with any of the things that we're charged with, with making decisions on.
Just basically deciding what size, how many layers will fit, will look good.
Yeah.
And be able to see.
I'm willing for some other, a group of you all to decide that for us and bring it back. I just don't want to waste planning board meeting time, hashing out stuff like that and trying out this and trying out that. Before we know it, it's going to be June and we don't even have a map yet.
Well, I, I, I think you're looking at this whole process as going a lot faster than the reality of how fast it's going to go.
Well, it's going to go awfully slow if we don't start moving ahead.
We, we do not have a consultant. We don't even have money for.
We don't need a consultant to get a map together.
I re- I realize that, but in, in the scheme of things, the, rather than the planning board being the lead as the master plan task force did for probably what, a year?
Yeah.
As soon as we can fund a consultant, a professional who knows much better than us how to do a zoning rewrite and how to, how to organize the public involvement, which in my conversation with Brandy, she has said, if you are going to be doing new zoning districts, you definitely want to have an awful lot of public involvement in that process. And I don't see that happening until sometime in the summer.
Um, the start of it.
The start of it.
I mean, I, I understand, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. But I think asking the public to decide where to draw the lines, I think you're asking too much. I think that should be our role.
I, I, I don't know that Brandy would ask the public where to draw the lines, but I, I think having a third party or outside consultant facilitate that whole process and facilitate that whole public involvement process is is going to be able to diffuse a lot of the politics of the situation.
Now, I can see getting heavy public involvement when we start sitting down deciding on what the actual wording is going to be for each district. Like how much setback you want in this district, what kind of building size, you want to have lot coverage, things of that nature. But just saying, this is going to be the rural area, this is going to be the downtown area, this is going to be sort of the lake, the lake districts, these are going to be the middle areas. I think that's more for us. I, and it just playing around, just getting some stuff till you, just getting some stuff to start to look at.
I, I think getting some stuff together and start to look at it and come up with some ideas, that's the way I think we should be doing it. But that having been said, as soon as we have, whether it's Brandy or some other firm, I think we would be best served by letting somebody who has gone through this process several or many times take the lead on it.
Well, I, I completely agree with you once we get to that point. What I'm saying, I think what Kurt's saying is that we want to get to that point.
Yeah.
Well in advance of hiring the consultant. So that when the consultant's hired, we hand them the package of all the stuff we've been talking about for the last couple of months.
Mm-hmm.
All these ideas, rough sort of concepts, general thoughts about what sort of restrictions we want to have and what we don't want to restrict and so forth. That consultant that can take that information and, and get a sense of what this board is, is trying to strive for. And then I think they can lead us from there, absolutely. So what, what I, what I'm suggesting is we, we don't want to lose any momentum on this because we don't want to start doing that until the consultant's hired. Well, we're not going to make it this year at all.
I don't expect we're going to make it this year.
I think we need to flip that on its head too. You can do a lot of pre-work because you thought it was the right pre-work and then find out that it doesn't align with what needed to be asked in a way that is modern planning. So I think, you know, we have. So I think, you know, we have to consider that we might, what we think might be the correct pre-work. Might not exactly, like giving them generalities might help. But maybe dialing it down to a more, the minutia might not be as helpful as we think.
No, 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 but it's like, the consultant shows up and says, she says, well, what do you wanna do? He says, oh, well, you know, three, three months from now, the consultant gets hired. And she asks, so what do you wanna do? He says, well, we wanna draw some new zoning districts. Okay, she's gonna ask us or he, okay, well, where are you thinking of drawing them? And so, oh, I don't know, somewhere on the map. I mean, I don't wanna be at that stage.
So can I ask, because I've watched Rob facilitate sessions before, I'm gonna pick on you for a second. So I've watched you do it up on a whiteboard. So if we were literally like ten minutes ago to go grab the projector, we could probably be drawing on the whiteboard, right? Just drawing, drawing, right? So do we start off with something like that so that we aren't worrying about like what to print and how? Do that initial like big just top level, like let's just do some drawing. And then we realize, hey, we wish the quadrants were this, so that you've done that initial pass. You can wipe it off, you can take a photo of it, right? Um, and so that it does progress, cuz I feel like it, it takes like seconds to hook up a projector.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, right, right, just, just at some point.
I guess the.
Sidebar.
Could, could we have a big map on the wall in two weeks?
Yeah, that would be a great goal, it's up there and then you start to talk about these things.
Because when you see it, you're gonna see which ones you wanna pull out. You're gonna say, I wanna pull this quadrant out cuz I wanna see what those lots actually are.
And we don't wanna wordsmith the zoning.
No, 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 we just, we wanna build the map first.
Right, I mean.
Cuz the maps are overview.
We're gonna give the consultant like a conceptual, this is what, this is where we think we wanna go. And if we're way off.
Tell me why we don't.
Right, yeah, yeah, if something's completely missing, put something, just way off these here, please tell us now. Uh, but at least gets something to present to the consultant to say, this is what we're thinking, um.
Is it a realistic goal?
Yeah.
To have the projector for, um, the next time we meet on the eight, to begin looking at it and getting a feel for what it looks like?
Projector, definitely, Rob?
Yeah, it's right in the other room.
I know it is.
Right.
Yeah, okay. At least, at least the delay is.
Is our working session, right?
Right, it is.
Opposed to hearings?
Yeah.
So that's the goal.
Yeah, right.
If we happen to get a, 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 a printout by then?
Cool.
Great, right? If we have to redo the printout, a large printout, so be it.
Right.
Cost you ninety bucks.
And I think if, if David and, and Rod.
Yeah.
If anybody else wants to get involved, limited to three, well, you're not planning board members, so in any event.
Right.
Um, to talk about those details of how, what this printed thing could be and, you know, the colors and so. My gosh, just do that. We don't wanna waste our time at a, at a meeting.
It's better to look at something that's wrong and correct it.
Well, yeah, and you're gonna project the layers and you're gonna say, okay, there's too much frigging crap there, we can't use that layer. Just throw it out, but when you get out to the interlands, that layer may work cuz there aren't a lot of lots.
Just print a piece of it.
Right.
At the, the actual scale you're gonna have on the wall, you can see that, you don't even need.
Yeah, even like eleven by seventeen, so you have some detail. And if I was stru, showing structures, I mean, it's like structures come down. You know, those structures go up, that's, that's not really, that's not related to.
Exactly.
To what this, where the lot's located or the shape, size of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that won't define where you're gonna draw the lines.
Yeah, yeah.
Because all structures do is put structures up there. And structures, some people put them in the middle of a lot, some people put them towards the road. It, it's not relative.
It's not.
And I think we should have a series of, um, just general goals and like principles to guide us. And, and the reason I say this, and I, like, one that I would propose would be. To run a zone randomly through a giant parcel, right? We ran into this recently up on four A where it's like, well, is it an R one or is it a R three?
Yeah.
And I mean, there's no reason on a very large parcel, I don't know why that happened, but I think just if we had some things in our mind. And we're thinking about it before next time, like generally we would like to be more careful about this or we would like to have this happen.
There's pluses and minuses to both of those because lot lines change and then what happens to the zoning line? Where, where does it go?
Let's, the, the, Kate's point though, that, that we don't wanna debate it tonight, but we wanna think about that concept.
Overall concept, yeah.
Right, I mean, it's something for the consultant to help us with.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, what is, we based one of the, one of the zones on elevation.
Right, yeah.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And this elevation goes like this.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's just, I mean, it's things like, if there's pluses and minuses to doing it both ways, so.
Right.
If it's just X distance from the road.
Right.
It's a known point.
Yeah.
There's no arguing over, about it. Um, if it follows a lot line, then it's gonna go like this.
Right.
Because all the back lots don't line up.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not more thinking that, I'm thinking there are ones where we distinctly do things that are foolery and.
We slid it right through the middle.
At the top. So just overriding.
Another topic that I think we could make some generalizations about and hand the consultant some, some guidance, uh, is, uh, building heights. A, we could get. Through the town manager, I assume, a letter from the fire department that says that these are our. This, this is what we want to see as the fire department. Uh, or something in writing that we can always refer to it, you know, this is why we chose a certain building height restriction. Maybe they don't even have a concern. Any event.
That's changed.
Any event, you could also, and I, I did this just for, for fun, I, I kinda had a little bit of fun.
Yeah, that was, that was a very cool survey you did.
So I, I, I drove around town, I said, what's the tallest building in this town? As you probably know, it's the Shaker, the Great Stone Dwelling.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, try to fix the roof on that.
And, and, uh, so I, I drove around and I, I, uh, just made note of. Where we had buildings that were above like two and a half stories.
Mm-hmm.
Came back, went on Google Earth, you can, you know, ride right down the street, take a picture and stuck those in there and kind of organized a, a little display. Or presentation, I guess. And I think from that, you can make some generalizations about, well, we wanna make sure our zoning ordinance perhaps. Doesn't limit what we already have predominantly built in town, right?
Right.
And then how high would you want to allow things to go before you kicked into a Z V A situation? What could you do for special and so forth, you know, things like that?
Yeah.
And, and none of that needs to get written in, in zoning language, uh, wording. But it can be written in sort of general idea, again, to hand to that consultant.
Yeah.
And I think there are other things like that that we could, we could talk about.
What I would like to see us do, which was, I think I introduced it at our last meeting. Was to start to become familiar with some of the quote innovative land use techniques. Which are used to concentrate density where you want density concentrated. And to keep density low in areas where you want to keep, keep them low. And. You know, I, I think we can have a couple of discussions on that. So that when we get to the point where we have a consultant. And the consultant is saying, well, if you want to concentrate your density in the downtown area. You might consider. X, Y, and Z as incentives to people. And, you know, I, I think if we as a board become familiar with these concepts, I don't think we have to become experts at them. But just to have a working knowledge of, I think it's six seventy-four. I may be wrong on that, um. You know, if we have a working knowledge, then when we start to meet with a consultant. Uh, we'll know what he or she is talking about.
So how do we do that?
Uh. There was a hand book that was referenced in a previous mailing. And it's, it's ridiculously large. But I think skimming that, uh, you don't have to read the model ordinances. You don't have to read, you know, everything, but I think if you.
Is that the state of New Hampshire planning board records?
Yeah, it's a big, it's like four hundred pages, it's a big one.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't expect everybody to read it.
Right.
From cover to cover. But I would like everybody to peruse it.
Yeah.
And become familiar with some of the concepts and we can talk about, well, this one. Might work in Enfield. This one definitely will not work in Enfield and that way we.
Mm-hmm.
Get rid of a lot of the clutter, so when we go to, or when we have a consultant. We can say, we think that this, this, and this might work.
Yep.
And, you know, what's your opinion on it as a professional planner? And how do you think we can integrate them into our zoning ordinances and our subdivision ordinances?
That, is that book, uh, I assume it's online, can we get copies of that?
I don't know, Rob.
Copies of the innovative land use stuff?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's like a four hundred page booklet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, we can certainly.
Do you have one, like if somebody wanted to read a hardcover, they could come down and.
At least.
No, that's fine.
Maybe like.
Some people do better.
Further highlighting.
Plus it was available, twenty-five bucks.
Yeah, yeah, you do have.
Uh, and then the, uh, as a master plan, we really, really need a hard copy of that.
I think, Rob, you were gonna investigate hard copies of the master plan.
Yes, I was gonna print some low budget right on our printer here for you guys, right?
Yeah. Can I ask, so my understanding was that when the copy went online, it was gonna also be formatted so it could be read on the screen. Right, so the maps would not be that map, it would be. So traditionally, when you do, you have to make a whole nother copy, so you have page one is here and then page. Two and three are like this aligned, so they're easier to read. Maybe I clicked on the wrong copy, but.
We, we are, we are having some issues.
Okay.
And our planning consultants who put the whole thing together. Has been on a three week junket around the world and I believe she is, I believe she is back. And.
I was just wondering if I was in the wrong.
No, no, no.
You're supposed to do that.
Not have it say draft on that website because it's not.
I, I know, I know it's not a draft.
But she's not the reason it says draft, that's the website herself, right?
Uh, where on the website?
Uh.
On the, on the.
The website may work, but, uh, let's see.
On the off page.
Enfield.
It should be, uh.
The other day it was.
You can get you dot com, I don't know. Can't. Hold on, I missed it.
Oh, W, W W.
Come on.
I was gonna say, you don't need W's anyways. So read, okay, so it says, read the adopted master plan draft here.
Right there.
I mean, it's in red. So I'm like.
It's Barbara.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, okay, I had asked her to change that.
It's kind of hard to read in general in red, let's, here's the other thing, I think it's. I know this wasn't intentional, it was very disrespectful to colorblind people to do this color combination. Red and green for somebody who are color, is colorblind is really not very nice. So I'm not, I'm sure it was not intentional.
This is not the way it's supposed to display and that's what David's talking about.
Yeah.
It means I'm.
It's supposed to be a book.
Well, it's a book and you, almost like opening pages. And, and Rob, for, for our purposes, I don't, I don't need the pictures. It's the text that.
No, no, you, you, you need the maps.
Well, when it's in the.
Like this.
It's not gonna cost us more money to print it one way or another, they charge you the same amount of.
Right, and splitting the match like that does not, neither.
Right.
That was where my brain was like. Then I put half of it, I took the two and I put them on each of my screens. Side by side.
Kate, I think if you download the PDF. You can have the book format.
I.
Download the file.
Don't think so, David, maybe I'm wrong. I tried it, this is a while.
Cuz I, I have, I have it in book format.
Oh, do you really?
And I'm pretty sure I downloaded it.
I mean, I, I have.
Get it to work.
I have the paid Adobe PDF and it's not doing that.
Yeah, this is the, uh.
Paid for the version.
This is the file that downloads.
I have the paid version.
Preview.
So. So. So my version will allow me to rearrange it myself. But I just.
Yeah.
Don't have it made.
Um, Kate, on, on your version.
Anyways, point taken.
Yeah.
We need copies.
Right, yeah.
So. I can rewrite this whole thing, my version.
Yeah, well, so can I.
He was going to give us copies, right?
Um, we're actually planning on getting some bound copies. But again, there are some, there are some file issues that Brandy needs to adjust. Or address. And, um. She's been unavailable. But I think she's back.
I mean, just print black and white, at least we got the words and we can, we won't look at the maps.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be called, right, five, four, three ones.
And all those files are on my server, so I can't access it.
Okay. That meeting will have those copies, only.
And I, you know, it's. The cost of printing in color versus black and white, I don't think is gonna be a significant obstacle.
It's not like it used to be.
So.
We can put a color for you guys. I would prefer to wait for the actual bound book because I'm gonna toss the copy you give me out. You know, I don't keep paper unless it's like the really official.
You'd wanna. It's just hard to go to that website and reference this while you're thinking of that.
That, I use three screens to do it and my tablet.
I only have one, so.
Right, I agree with you, it's hard.
And when you highlight it, it doesn't move with it.
No.
It leaves a mark on the screen.
You highlight them.
Hey, the, the laptop.
I use a highlighter.
Use your cursor.
Color my last one.
Okay.
Black, you're gonna use the Sharpie.
Um, anything else people, people wanna talk about tonight?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second Kate made a motion.
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor of adjournment. Say aye.
Aye.
Ours. Have a good time, Linda.
Thank you. Supposed to be in the eighties tomorrow.
Oh, you're.
No, we're getting fresh powder.
Yeah.
I'm going, I'm going to racket.
I will take your envelopes back.
Gave away my teeth.
Chair.
But I'm taking my kid, I missed it in the lodge with Megan O'Brien.
It was good, Friday.
Not bad, we were driving by, it was.
Good, good number.
Take your envelopes.
Both of you.
Good, good.
I'm breaking it there.
You can have all my paper too.
Yeah, recycle it, yeah.
Yeah, I had emergency go get a dog because the woman was probably having her foot cut off next day or two. I always, I never have a dull moment. And then she was like, this morning she texted me and was like, well, she's not looking like that friendly and she's not that like. Good with other dogs, she doesn't ride in a car, this is not what we talked about yesterday. When I said, yeah, I'm better, I wouldn't doubt her anyway. So I get her, the dog, oh, friendly.
Oh, yeah.
She crept to my house, loved my dog. I was like. Got fixed, but has never, so doesn't have that, so I'm coming back. So I spent a while up there looking to see if there were incoming dog tracks or outgoing and determined that it has not been exposed to other dogs. So I'm fine, but I was like, I was like, I like find my neighbor, I was like, okay, I'm gonna drive and meet some weird dude I've never met in the woods. Up, up Moose Mountain, no cell phone, Barbara.
Um.
You do good work.
You're right.
Not much of it.
Don't you forget it.
Yeah.
I gotta impress somebody.
Their pay scales really low.
Yeah, really. I used to do good work too, but then I retired and I do a lot better work now.
All the retired people I know are busier now than they were when they were working.
Uh, my parents ran away during school vacation and I wonder what that's about. But like, my mom's like, let us know if you need help, and then I get a text like, hey, I'm on the plane to Florida, I was like.
It sounds like a good plan.
Yeah. Like the nap. And, uh, she, they deserve to get.
Yeah, no.
Two and two together.
Right.
Once she was sleeping, I was like.
Bye.
Yes.
I got a nice email from Amanda.
So here to me, I'm talking here and I'm like, no, Carol, I can't see your number on the brand because they haven't, like. And I'm like, no, Carol, I can't send you a number on the grant, because they haven't, like, I've awarded them, but we haven't paid them out, and. I'm working on auditing. So I'm saying, hey, you guys, I haven't seen a request come in, saying, why? I said, you know, I can write you a check now, you know, your things, you know, I'm.